Parishutthu namathukke mahimiyundavada?
Praise me to the holy name of God.
Indhaa asurudikippatta maale velaiyil ongalai sandi padil krustavukkunna marichadhirai.
I'm happy in Christ in meeting you.
Namudiya dhyanathiruke, matthi yedhanar suvi shesam, 21 madhikaram, 33, 34 vasanangalakka namadhi ekavanathayi naam kondoruvap.
Matthew's Gospel, Chapter 21, Verses 33 and 34, let us turn our attention for meditation this evening.
Kathodiyae parishutthu namathukke mahimiyundavada?
Praise me to the holy name of God.
Sumar, 2000 mandugalukku muntbaha, andhavaragi Esu Krushtu pesinna oru umayai, vaathai, namenge vasikke kettrum.
Here we have read a parable which was spoken by our Lord Jesus Christ nearly 2000 years ago.
Oru veelai, indhaa vedavasanangalai, neengal padithirukalam, arindhirukalam, palavidamana prasangangal vaialaga, neengal kettrukalam.
Perhaps you might have studied this scriptural portion, heard about it, and listened to many sermons based on it.
Ananal, idhe vesa vedavasanatin vaialaga, marvudiyum, indhaa maale velaiyil devan ongalai sandike varumbukiraa.
The Lord is willing to meet you once again this evening through these scriptural verses.
Oru thraachat thootatay oruvaun undaki, adarku veeli edaithe, adarki ellavidamana karangalaim seythe, kanikaalam samivittabuludhe, kaniyay vangi kondu varumbodiaga, thanndu yae veelyaartkalai anipinann.
A man planted a vineyard, hedged it round about it, and did all the necessary things. At the due time, he sent a servant to bring the harvest of it.
Ovaru manidhanum sila karangalai yedhrubarkrann.
Every man is expecting certain things.
En, indhaa maale velaiyil kadandavandhirukkara neengalukuda, palavidamana yedhrubarpugaloodu, andhavurudiyae prasannathukke vendhirukalam.
In this evening, our also, you people have come with lot of expectations the presence of God.
Manidhan yedhrubarpoolda oru manidhan.
Man is having expectation.
Adubolave, andhavurukuda, manidhanathil sila karangalai, avari yedhrubarkrann.
In the same way, God himself is also expecting certain things from man.
Oru thahappan than pillaiyinathil yedhrubarpudubole, devanukuda, thanndu yae pillagilathil, thanndu yae sayalaka uruvakkappattam manishinathil, sila karangalai, avari yedhrubarkrann.
Just like a father expects certain things from his son, God who created us in his image, is expecting certain things from us.
Indhaa maale velaiyilum, andhavar, edhayavudhu ongelukke cheyavindum, engra, yedhruparpill, devanudhi sanneedhanathle, neengal vendhirukalam.
You might have come to this evening in the presence of God, expecting something to be done by the Lord.
Manidha vaalvil, yedhruparpugal nereivairada pachathil, avan virakti adainduvudhrann.
When the expectations are not fulfilled, man is getting distressed.
Appududan, avan than vaalvai, kasandu, adayilandu boge, avan ayyatamagrann.
Then he has bitterness and even ready to lose his life.
Inge, andhavar, oru thraachat thootatay undaki, kanikalai, adil yedhrubarthu, thanndu yae veelyaakarnai, anipinadai, naam vasikke ketshom.
Here we read a man planted a vineyard and did the necessary things and expecting fruits, he sent his servant.
Devanathil, palavidamana yedhruparpugaloodu, kathodiyae samuthutle vendhirukkareerle, devan yedhrubarkravigalai, ongalal, kodukakudiya oru vaalkai, amaya mudihrada, amithukollamudihrada, enbadi, neengal sindhey lekkonduarangai.
In the presence of God, you have come expecting certain things from God, but is it possible for you to run the things which is expected from you by God?
Avan, thanndu yae uleyakka veelyaakarnai, anipinann, ananal, avargal, edhayame kodutha anupavellai.
He is sending his servants, but they did not give him anything.
Adarku padilaga, andhavuulyakarnai, adittaraga.
Instead of it, they begged the servants.
Adarku pinbu oru uleyakarnai anipinann.
Then another servant was sent.
Avanai kolaisaidhargan.
He was killed.
Adarku pinbu oru uleyakarnai avan anipinann.
Again, he had another servant.
Avanai kallarinthargan.
They stowed him.
Kilevulla vaasanangalai, neengal idellam padikalap.
In the verses below, we read it.
Naatkil ponnabuludhe.
As they swasthva.
Oru veelai, nan, ennudhiyekkumarney anipinall, bayandhu, avargal kanikalai koduparagalenndu chelli, kadaisiaga, thanndey kumarney, avan anupugrann.
Perhaps if at all, I sent my son, they may give the fruits. In that tension, he sent his own son.
Avargalo, veeru sindayagi, ivan sudandaravali, ivanai kondruvotal, innimil ketkaaalalayenndu chelli, avanaiyam kolaisaidhargan.
But they had a different thought. He is inheritor. If we kill him, there is nobody to claim the vineyards.
Manidha vaalvil, andhavar yedhruparpu, enna?
What is the expectation of God in the human life?
Thanndu yae sayalil, thanndu yae ruubatil, uruvakkappattam manidhanathil, devan, eday yedhrubarkrann.
What God is expecting in the life of man who has been created in the image and likeness of God.
Avanathil panathai yedhrubarkraro.
Thus he expects money from him.
Illavital kaanikiyai yedhrubarkraro.
Thus he expects offering.
Illavital, edavudhu, avanudhiyae shariyathle vedanegalai anupavithu, thannai panindukollavendu, avar yedhrubarkraro.
Thus we expect that man should be afflicted by sickness and he should bow and worship unto God.
Appudi yalla biryamanaule, ovaru manidha vaalvilum, andhavar, kanikalai, oru nereivana vaalkaiyai, avari yedhrubarkrann.
Not so beloved people of God, the Lord is expecting fruits from every man and he is expecting a better life.
Oru thootatay undakinam manidhan, kaniyay yedhruparpudutavara?
It's wrong. A man who has made a garden, expecting fruits from it.
Inge, avan kaniyay yedhrubarthavudhu, kedittabadil enna?
When he expects fruits, what was the reply that he got?
Kadaisiaga, thanndu yae oraye verana kumarney, andhavaragi Esu Krusuvai, manidhanathilundu kaniyay pettukollumbodiaga anipinabuludhu, avargal, avargukkodutha paris, avarudai kolaisaidhutthan.
Finally, when he sent his own son, the begotten son, Lord Jesus Christ, to receive fruits from men, what was the price rendered, they killed him?
Manidha vaalvil, andhavar, kaniyay yedhrubarkrann.
In the human life, the Lord is expecting fruits.
Indhaa maale velaiyil, indhaa yedhruparpai, indhaa maale velaiyil kadandavandhirukkara, tamudiyae janathoodum, vendhirukkara, ovaruvaroodum, avar yedhruparpodu, indhaa maale velaiyil kadandavandhirukkara.
This evening, our also, God has come with expectation of this kind towards all the people who are gathered here.
Purushen, manivinathle, sila karangalai yedhrubarkrann.
The husband is expecting certain things from the wife.
Manivipurushinathle, sila karangalai yedhrubarkrann.
The wife is expecting certain things from the husband.
Oru uleyakaran, sabaila sila karangalai yedhrubarkrann.
A servant or God expects certain things from the church.
Ananal, ivegal keditkatha buludhu dan, angay prachanigalum, dukkangalum, vedanegalum, aligirikrann.
When these are not obtained, there are problems, difficulties, and pain.
Inge, kaniyay teedi, kaniyay pettukollumbodi, vandha ellarayum, avargal kolaisaidhutthan.
Here, all the people who came seeking fruit were killed by those people.
Devanayavitthu, velaginnam manidha samudhayathai, marvudidi thannedham milukkumudiaga, avar tirkadrisigalayum, janangalayum, thanndu yae pillagalayum, anipikondayirundhar, ananal, avargalai, avargal yechukollavellai.
The Lord has been sending prophets and other people of God to draw the people who has been gone away from the presence of God towards him, but they did not accept him.
Thanndu yae sondakumarneyim anipipathar, ananal, avarim, avargal kolaisaidhargan.
He is sending his own begotten son, even that son was killed.
Arambathilirundhe devan, kani, engra oru visiyathile dan, kriyeshidhundey varugrann.
Right from the beginning, the Lord is okay in the matter called the fruits.
Manidhanukku mudhalamudhalaga keditta kattalai, kaniyin molemagathan, avanuka keditthaade.
The first commandment that man received was given through the fruit only.
Avanukke, jeeviviritchathin kaniyay, avar koduthaar.
The Lord gave him the fruit of the tree of life.
Sagalaviritchangalin kaniyim pusikkalamendre, avanukke vaipukoduthaar.
The Lord gave him opportunity to eat the fruits of all trees.
Nanmai, thaimai, enbadi, ariyakkudiya kaniyay matharam, nee pusikkavendam, endre, avanukke, avar katlaitturundhar.
The Lord has commanded that you should not eat the fruit of the tree of good bird alone.
Idhitthan vedam chullakrathu, avanai nallavanaga vesisthitthar, avano, anegu ubayatandarangalai, terindukundan.
The Bible says, the Lord created us good, but he has chosen many wrong and spinning ways.
Avan valarumbodiaga, palavidamana kanikalai koduthaar, ananal, avan kettupoge, oru vidamana kaniyay, avan pusitthan.
The Lord gave him many fruits so that he may grow, but in order to correct himself, man ate one fruit.
Inge, enna nandhadhade?
What happened here?
Kani irundhade, ananal, avargal than kaniyay kodukke, manadillam valirundharag.
There was fruits, but they were not willing to give the fruits.
Indhreki ettanaveer, andhavurukku muntbaha, andhavurukku kani kodukakudiya oru vaalkai, vaalkirireerai, vaala poogirireerai.
Today you are going to lead a life which is a life fruit bearing unto God.
Indhaa kuttangalakaaha, nan jebithabuludhu, enn janathinathil, nan kaniyay yedhrubarkrannendre, andhavar pesinar.
When I prayed for these meetings to God, the Lord spoke to me. I expect fruits from my people.
Indhaa maale velaiyil, indhaa kutthatil kadandavandha janathinathil, andhavurudhiyedhruparpu, avargal, oru kani darakkudiya vaalkaiyay, amaykavendum, aday velipaduthavendu, endudan, devanudhiyae, sitthamayum, tittamayum, irakkarad.
In the evening hour, the expectation plan and aim of God is that people of God who came here should have a fruit-bearing life.
Anmeega vaalkai, oru kani darakkudiya vaalkai.
The spiritual life is a fruit-bearing life.
Deviiga vaalkai, oru kani nireyinda vaalkai.
The divine life is a fruit-bearing life.
Oru devanudhiyae manidhan, oru kani darakkudiya oru manidhan.
Yeah, man of God is a fruit-bearing man.
Yakobukke, 12 pillagalirundharag.
Jacob had 12 sons.
Namakellarukkame, andhasaatiyam, sarutharam teriyam.
We know the substance and the story.
Ananal, adiyahamun 99 madhikaratle, thanndu yae ovaru pillagalai kurithu, avan endhavathatala pesigran, endraneegal parangai.
In the book of Genesis, Chapter 14, in what manner he was speaking about every son?
Ovarudhiyae jeeviam, ovarudhiyae vaalkain tanmai, yeppudi amayindhade, yeppudi avarudhiyae vaalkai, velipaduthal irundhade, endre, yeppudi avant chullakrann.
How he says, what kind of life everyone was manifesting, what kind of life everyone was leading?
Irandu veerai, avan kodumayin karivigalendre, varnikiran.
Two people are described as instruments of cruelty.
Innoru mahanai, avan singhamendu chullakrann.
Another man is called a lion.
Innoru vaanai, kaludaiendra, avan varnikiran.
Another man is described as.
Oru vaanai, avan sarppamendu chullakrann.
One person is described as serpent.
Oru vaanai, oonaayendu chullakrann.
One person is called as a wolf.
Oraye vittlulapillagaludhiyeshbavangal, avulde sayalgal, yeppudi irundhadenbadi sindhituparangai.
These are the characters and life of the children in a house, just to think about it.
Ananal, adiyahamun 99 madhikaratle, 22 vasanathle, oraye oru pillai kurithu chullakrann, avan matharam, kani darum, sedi, endu chullakrann.
In the book of Genesis, Chapter 14, verse 22, he says about a child, he is a fruitful bow.
Avanukkulledan, devanudhiyae kriyay, nadibattad.
In him, the work of the Lord was done.
Avanukkutthan dariyasanam keditthaade.
He got a vision.
Avanukkutthan velipaduthal keditthaade.
He got revelation.
Avanithan singhasana varai, devam tuikikondu poikondayirundhar.
The Lord was exalting him high up to the throne.
Indhaa maale velaiyil, devan unai veerthavendu manal, nee oru kani darum vaalkai valdal, unai, sirachalailirundhe, singhasana varai, devanall tukeyeduthukondu bohamudiyam.
If you are able to lead a fruit-bearing life, the Lord will be able to exalt you from the dunce unto the throne.
Nee eliyavanaa herukalam.
You may be poor.
Nee oru shriyavanaga herukalam.
You may be simple.
Nee oru kuppayile valakkudiya manidhanai herukalam.
You may be a person living in a very bad life.
Nee puludhilayulla oru manishanai kanappadala.
You may be having wrong habits.
Ananal, indhreki, neengal kani darum vaalkaiyavalumbodiaga, ongalai neengal samarpittal, kattar, maghimiyana singhasana varai, ongalai kondhusaludhe, avar valavaraayirukrann.
If you are able to submit yourself to lead a fruit-bearing life, the Lord is capable of taking up to the throne.
Indhreki ettanaveer, kani darakkudiya vaalkai valumbodiaga, indhaa maale velaiyil, ongalai samarpikke varumbukirireerai.
Today, how many of you are willing to submit yourselves, lead a fruit-bearing life?
Armiyana devanudhiyae pillaiye.
Beloved child of God.
Andhavar, indhaa kaniyay yedhrubarthavudhu, manidhan kodutha kani dan, enna?
When God expected these fruits, what was the fruit that was given by man?
Andhavar avanathle deviikathai yedhrubarthavudhu, avan kodutha kaniyay kurithu, romerikaladhanirubham yela madhikaratle, vityasamana oru vasanam chullapadurukrann.
When the Lord was expecting divinity from man, in Romans, Chapter 7, what he gave, it's a different thing, it is written.
Avanathle rundhe, oru nalakaniyay, oru rusikaramana, oru vaalkaiyay, oru amayidankina vaalkaiyay, andhavar yedhrubarthavudhu, avanudhiyae vaalkaiyil, avan velipadithinadu, romer yela ayindle chullirukrannadu, paava ichai, marnatthukeduvaana kanikalai undupannithu, endu chullirukrann.
When God was expecting fruit-bearing life from humanity, and when the Lord was expecting that he should lead a life of divinity, in Romans, Chapter 7, verse 5, it is written, he was living in the motions of sin.
Andhavar yedhrubarkrakani, adu deviigamanaadu, nan adhey kurithu pinnahavu ongelukke pesigran, ananal, manidhanathle, andhreki velipadtha kani, marnatthukke eduvaana kani, endu chullapadurukrann.
The fruits expected by God are divinity, later I will explain, but the fruit that was revealed by mankind was the motions of sin which causes death.
Andhreki kaniyay teedi kumaran vandhathuboleve, indhreki gudha tamudhi janathil kaniyay teedi, andhavaragi Esu Krushtu, indhaa maale velaiyil, enga kadandavandhirukrann.
Just like that today, the sun came seeking fruit. Today evening also, Lord Jesus Christ came here seeking fruit from you.
Ananal, inge, manidhan velipaduthakudiya tanmai enna?
But what is the fruit that man is revealing?
Paava ichai, marnatthukeduvaana kanikalai, velipadithinadu, endu chullapadurukrann.
The motions of sins which brought forth fruit unto death, it is written.
Armiyana nanbanay, andhavaragi Esu Krushtu illamal, oru manidhan kani kodupananal, avanudhiyae vaalkai, marnatthukeduvaana kanikalai than, adukoduthukondayirukkum.
Beloved people of God, if a man is leading fruits which is not having the flows with Lord Jesus Christ, it will be causing only death.
Esu illamal, oru manidhanudhiyae vaalvai, olivisha mudiyad.
Without Lord, without Jesus Christ, a man cannot shine in his life.
Alanathan, yovan 15th madhikaratle, enna yallamal, ongalal, untrum cheyakkoodaade, endre, Esu pesinar.
In John's Gospel, Chapter 15, Jesus said, "Without me, you cannot do anything."
Endhamanishanayim prakasipikira, andhameyana oli, oru manidhanudhiyae vaalkaiyile kanappatthal dan, avan jeevanukkeduvaana oru vaalkaiyavalamudiame, thavira, machappadi, avan marnatthukkeduvaana oru vaalkaidan, valndhundayiruppan.
Only when the one who is illuminating, lightening, every individual is in the life of a person, he will be able to lead a fruit-bearing life.
Andhavar illamal oruvaan payanappatthal, avan than vaalvin ilakkai, adayave mudiyad.
If a man is journeying without God, he cannot reach his destination.
Andhavar illamal oru manidhan, avanudhiyae vaalvil munneravendu, endu virminal, avan yirulshundha vaalkaiyile esikkii, tavikka arambippan.
If a man is trying to progress without the Lord's presence, he will be entangled in a dark life.
Alanathan vedam chullakrathu, avarala andri, rachipu illai, endu chullapadurukrann.
That is why the scriptures say, except through him, there is no salvation.
Manisha jadi rachikappadumbadi, Esu Krusuvin naamamey allamal, vairu oru naamamum, katleedappadavellai.
Except the name of Jesus Christ, no other man has been commanded for the salvation of humanity.
Manidhan, devanayavitthu velaginnabuludhu, avanukkule uruvana kani dan, marnatthukke eduvaana kanikal.
When man tripped away from God, the fruit that was formed in him was the fruit causing death.
Armiyana sagodhanay sagodriyae, unnudhiyae vaalvil, indhaa marnatthukke eduvaana kanikal irukkaraada, enbadi, oru visay sindhituparang.
Beloved brother, sister, just a minute, think whether there are fruits relating to death available in your life.
Paava ichai, oru manidhanukkule irukkuvanal, avanukkuleyendu velipadakkudiya kani, marnatthukke eduvaana oru kani.
When the motions of sin are existing in the life of a person, the fruits that are coming out in his life are causing death.
Avanudhiyae sayalgaldan, kani, endra alakappadukrann.
His actions are called the fruits.
Romerikaladhanirubham 21 madhikaram, 29 vasanathilirundhe, 33 vasana varai, neengal vasithupathal, marnatthukke eduvaana, oru thavaraana vaalkainudhiyae tanmai, angay telivakachullapadukrann.
In Romans, Chapter 1, Verses 29 to 32, we are able to read what are the characters which are causing death in the life of a person.
Romer 1, 21, 32 varai, 23 kutchangal, angay chullapadukrannadu, ivegal anaitthume, marnatthukke eduvaana kutchangal, endu chullapadukrann.
Romans, Chapter 1, Verses 29 to 30, 23 crimes are mentioned, these are the crimes which are causing death.
Indhaa thavargal, indhaa kanikal, oru manidhanalayirukkuvanal, andhavar, aday yedhrubarkrannara?
If these wrongs and fruits are existing in the life of a person, is God expecting that from him?
Indhaa maale velaiyil, unnudhiyae vaalvin tanmai, yeppudi irukrann?
In this evening, what is the nature of your life?
Oru veelai, neengal andhavari arindavallaga herukalam, andhavari ariyamal herukalam.
Perhaps you might have known the Lord or you might not have known the Lord.
Ongelade vaalkai saraapaga amaya, andhavaragi Esu Krushtu endra, oru deviiga sakthiay, nangal ongel karimukappaduthukrann.
We want to introduce a divine power called Jesus Christ so that we may lead a better life.
Armiyana sagodhanay sagodriyae, unnudhiyae vaalvil, indhaa maale velaiyil, indhaa yela 40 maniyalavil, unnudhiyae vaalvil, nee velipaduthakudiya kani, enna tanmai uladu?
Beloved child of God, in this evening, what is the nature of the fruit that you are bearing today now?
Oru veelai, neengal devanudhiyae pillagalendra alakappadala, ananal, andhmadhulam, romer 1, 29, 32 varai, 23 kutchangalil, edavudhu oru karayam irukkaraada, enbadi, neengal vasithuparangai.
Perhaps you may be called the child of God, but you have to just remember, reckon, if any of the things that are pointed out, 23 things, one is available in your life today.
Indhaa 23 karangalil, edayavudhu onrayani velipadithikondi, indhreki nee devasamudhiyare amarundirundhal, nee dan, andhavar yedhrubarkranntha kaniyay kodukkamal, marnatthukkeduvaana kanikalai kodukke, nee vendhirukkara, endu sindhitukoy.
If you are revealing any one of the 23 items mentioned here, then you can be clear that you are not giving fruits which is expected by God, but you are not giving other kinds of fruits.
Vedathle, vedathai kayil vaitthukondi, neengal vanchikappaduthu poiivadakudada.
Keeping the Bible in your hand, you should not get deceived.
Indhaa 23 karangalai cheydivargal, marnatthukkeduvaana avargal, endu vedam chullakrann.
The word of God says, the people who did 23 things are nigh on to death.
Oru veelai, idu unnudhiyae vaalvil, andhrala padakkavallakamaha kanappadala.
Perhaps these may be your day-to-day habits in your life.
Ivegalallam, devan manni thuduvar, endraneegal enni kondurukalam.
You may be thinking, God will forgive all these things.
Neengal aday padithupathal, andhrala vaalkaiyile, oru sadhana manidhan, tinamum cheyakkudiya thavargaldan, angay chullapadukrann.
If you read, you can see, these are the common mistakes which an individual is doing in his day-to-day life.
Ovar sadhana, oru tanim manidhanum, avan devanay arindavanum, ariyadavanum, illaram cheyakkudiya, oru sadhana kutchangalagathu chullapadukrannadu, ananal, kadaisi vasana mattaram chullakrannadu, ivegalai cheydivargal, marnatthukkeduvaana avargal.
Every ordinary human individual in his day-to-day life, whether a child of God or not, he is doing these things, but in the end, they are facing death.
Oru veelai, idhle chullapattai 23 karangal, ongelukul illamadurukalam, ananal, ivegalavudhu onrayagirundhalum, nee, marnatthukkeduvaana kanikalai, devanukke koduthukondurukrann.
Perhaps you may not be possessing these 23 characters, but if you possess one character, that means you are bearing fruit which is worthy of death.
Indhaa ikarangalai oru visay venal, vasithuparikal.
Let us once read those things.
Romer 1, 29, 32.
They which commit such things are worthy of death.
Idhle, ongeludhiyae manasachayethottu, enna nakarangalallam ongelukul irukkara, endbadi, sindhituparangai.
Touch your conscience, examine, what are the things that are existing in you?
Indhaa chullapattapattiyedil, edavudhu onrayirukkuvanal, nee Esuukke, enna kani kodukrani, enbadi, nee sindhitupar.
If in the list that is right, if one thing is available now, what kind of fruits you are bearing unto Jesus?
Esaiyathirkadrisina puystagam, 5 madhikaratle, oru manidhan, narkkulathraachathediyen naatti, oru kaniyay yedhrubarthu vandhan, ananal, kadaisile, adukoduthadu, kasappana kanikal, endu chullapadukrann.
In the prophetical book of Isaiah, Chapter 5, we are able to read, he planted a good vine, but when expected good fruits, it was rendering sore fruits.
Ettenay varsha krustava vaalkaiyile, nee kodukakudiya kani enna?
In these long years of Christian life, what is the fruit that you are bearing?
Rachikappatti ettanavaramgulukku pinbaha, unnudhiyae vaalkaiyile velipadakkudiya kani enna?
It is long that you have God saved, but what is the fruit that is revealed in your life?
Parishutthu thaavin abhishekathai bettan, nee, indhaa maale velaiyil, unnathle devan vandhi yedhrubarkumburudhu, nee kodukakudiya kaniyin tanmai enna?
You have received the anointing of the Holy Spirit, but the God high above is expecting fruits, what kind of fruit you are revealing, just examine.
Esaiyath 5 madhikaratle, 2 vasanathle, additha kani, kasappana kanikal, endu chullapadukrann.
In the book of Isaiah, Chapter 5, 2, it is this great bitter fruit.
Andhavar indhreki unnathle yedhrubarkumburudhu, nee ennatte kodukapogrann?
When Lord is expecting from you, what kind of fruit you are going to give?
Avar unnathle vairu edayame yedhrubarkavellai, oru kani darakkudiya vaalkaiyay yedhrubarkrann, ananal, nee yo, marnatthukkeduvaana kanikalai koduthukondi, additha kasappana kanikalai koduthukondi, nee kathodiyae samuthutle ukanthurukrann.
The Lord is expecting a fruit bearing from life from you, but he was rendering bitter fruits and you are causing these things and sitting in the presence of God.
Ungeladhiyae tevagalaivara sandhitthar?
He makes all your needs.
Onakke sugathai, nalasugathai koduthaar?
He has given you good health.
Ungeladhiyae jabangalakallam badil koduthaar?
He answered all your prayers.
Abathukka, abathukkaliyilindu kattar unai velakkinar?
He delivered from dangers.
Marnatthukkeduvaana kattugalindu devan unai viduvithaar?
The Lord delivered from the bindings of death.
Ettenayopradisthagali udaitthai, marvudiyum unai nesithar?
You broke so many consecrations, yet the Lord loves you.
Ananal, yeppudi aayinum nee sariyagi viduva, endraneegal yedhrubarthar, ananal, indhaa maale velaiyil, nee marvudiyum kasappana kaniyay kodukakudiya vanaai, andhavurudhiyae prasannathle amarundirukrann.
But the Lord expected that somehow you will be all rights, but this evening hour, you are revealing the bad fruit and sitting in the presence of God.
Indhaa tuudai pesa, nan megum yosithen.
I thought much to speak on this message.
Indhaa vaathagali chullam, megum nan yosithen.
I thought very much to speak these words.
Varumboludhu kuda, message maathivudalama, endrugu, nan yosithen.
When I was traveling, I thought of changing the message.
Ananal, andhavur chunnar, illai, nan enn janathil, nan kaniyay yedhrubarkrann.
But the Lord spoke, it's not so. I expect fruits from my people.
Avargaludhiyae tanmai, nee indhreki chullithaanaha vendum.
You should speak unto them about their own character.
Adhavan unnathle yedhrubarkrann, andhadeviigamana tanmai illamal, nee enna valndhundukrann, endu sindhitupar.
You think what kind of life you are leading without having the divine nature expected by God in you?
Avar ketkar, nan inni enne cheyavendum?
He is questioning, what should I do more?
Nanavarku veeli edaithen?
I fenced.
Nanavarku karkkalai porukkinen?
I took away the stones.
Nanavarku neerpaachinen?
I watered.
Adu oru biryay yedhruparpodu, enakthi, putturumbabaalan tarum, endra, nambekeyodi ellam seythen, ananal, ippoledo, adukasappana kanikalaitarukrann.
I did everything with expectation that it will be bearing good fruits, but now it is yielding bitter fruits.
Indhreki ettanaveer, oru kasappana vaalkai valndhundurukkareerai?
How many of you lead a bitter life today?
Ettenaveer, vaalkaiyile kasandu poi kanappadukondurukkareerai?
How many are bitter in your life today?
Ettenaveer, machavargamel kasappu ulavargalai, valndhundurukkareerai?
How many are leading the life having bitterness upon others?
Ongelukke teriyam.
You know that.
Indhaa vaathai unai nokki varukrathu, nee unaruvaai?
You realize that these words are coming towards you.
Innum, machavargalai nesikkakoodaade, oru tanmai ulavanai, tanmai ulavalai, nee kanappadukrann?
Yeah, man or woman, not able to love others you are seeing today.
Apostolana dabbadigalile, oru nyanasana betta manidhanai parthu, Pedri chullakrann, nee kasappana pitchil kattappattadai, nan avile kankaran, endu chunnan.
Two years, water baptist first, and Saint Peter is saying the acts of the apostles, you are bound in the chile of bitterness.
Simon, endra, oru mayaviththakaran, Esuvi viswasi thinganasanam bettkundan.
Simon, a man who was performing witchcraft, believed Jesus Christ and was water baptized.
Ananal, 8, 23, Pedri chullakrann, nee kasappana pitchil kattappattadai, nan kankaran.
In chapter 8, verse 23, he is saying that you are bound in this kind of evil nature.
Paava katti, kasappana pitchil, nee kanappadukrann.
The sin of, the binding of sin, you are in a chile.
Avan nyanasana medhutirundhan, ananal, unnudhiyae vaalkaiyile, oru kasappin wallaminaale, kattappattundhan.
He was water baptized, yet he was bound by a power of bitterness.
Ettenaveer, indhreki indhaa kaniyay kodukakudiulai, indhaa maale velaiyil, indhaa sattathiketukondurukkareerai?
How many people are bearing this fruit this evening hour, listening to this voice?
Esaa, oru asurudikippatta, oru devanudhiyae kodumbathai chandavan?
Esaa belonged to a family which was blessed by God.
Vakkuthaththu sandthadiyagi, Isakunudhiyae mahanaga kanappattavaru manidhan.
He was a man who was a son of Isaac, who has the seed of promise.
Ananal, avanukkule andhakasappana veer, alamaga kanappadukondurundhar.
But in him, the root of bitterness was very deep.
Anegar kirbaya elandu boge, andhakasappu karnamayirundadu?
That bitterness was responsible for losing many graces.
Anegar thiittupattupoge, adu oru karnamayirundadu?
Many are gotten defiled because of this.
Oru biryay kalagumundharikadu oru karnamayirundadu?
It was causing a great destruction.
Armiyana devanudhiyae pillaiye, nee indhaa kaniyay kodukkumudiaga, ettenay varudam, kattar unai padukathar, paraamritthan?
Oh beloved child of God, did God nourish and cherish you for a long soya period so that you may yield such a fruit?
Osia 13 madhikaram, 13 vasanathle, poyin kani, endra, oru kani chullapadukrann.
In Hosea, Chapter 10, Verse 3, the fruit of life is mentioned.
Ah, Osia 10, 13, avargal, poyin. Ah, Osia 10, 13, avargal poiyin kaniyay pusiitar.
In Hosea, chapter 10, verse 13, they tasted the fruit of life.
Yaar? Ebrohim.
Ephraim.
Ephraim, endra, oru devanidhi manidhanay kuruthisulirakarade?
It is written about a man of call.
Avanay kurutha andavarchalakar, avani nan yappudi kayviduva?
How I can give him up?
Nan yappudi avane kayvidu mudiyam?
How I can forsake him?
Appudi, devanala nesikappattavur manidhan, thanndi valkile, avan pradibalikke kudiya kanii, oru poiyin kaniyay, avan velipadukkara?
He was loved so much by God, but in his life, what he is reflecting, a life of lies he is revealing.
Kristava valkile, poi, enr, unnadhiyavalkile varumanaal, unnadhi irudaitai, saathan nirappinann, enr, nan unakadchulakar.
If there is a lie in your Christian life, that means Satan has filled your heart with that lie.
Yappoorudo oru devanidhi pillai, poi pesakkudiya vannai marinanao, avandhi irudaitai, saathan nirappinann, enr, apostol nadabadiyakalena vaasikira?
In Acts of the Apostles, we read, when a man is speaking lies, Satan has filled his heart with lies.
Apostol 5a madhigaram, chulirakarade, parishutthaviyin adutthale poi chulla, saathan, unnadhi irudaitai nirappinadi enna, enr, oru keelvikaapattukar?
In Acts of the Apostles, chapter 5, verse 3, it is written, why Satan has filled his heart with lies to the Holy Ghost?
Devanunidhi pillaiyulukulay, illavatthal satyaththi arindulukulay, poi, endra oru thanmai poradumanaal, saathan avandhi irudaitai nirappivuttadendre, ningal purindukalavendam?
Among the people of God, the people who know the truth, if the lie is still in their life, that means God has filled your heart with lies.
Oru veelai, nee chinnakariyangelakkukude, oru poi pesakkudiya vannai kaanappadala?
Perhaps you may be telling lies even for small things.
Indike anegar, ooliyalathile poi chulakarirai?
Many are telling lies on the workers today.
Kanikke vishayathile poi chulakarirai?
Even in the matter of offering, they are telling lies.
Adithaan apostol 5a madhigaramena vaasittham?
In Acts of the Apostles, chapter 5, we read.
Ananiasafera, 2veerame, kanikke vishayathile poi chuli, avargalidhi valkile, avargal poiyin kaniyay velipadittuvuttar?
Ananiasafera told lies in the matter of offering, they were bearing the fruit of life in their life.
Indike kaniyay, avar teedithar?
The Lord is expecting.
Oru nallakaniyay edirbharkkar?
The Lord is expecting good fruits.
Unakadukoodukappattavabhisheham, oru velayyarappattavabhisheham.
The anointing that has been given unto you is a precious anointing.
Unakadukadaita alaipu, oru velayyarappattavur parama alaipu?
The call that you receive is a precious call, a heavenly call.
Unakadukoodukappattav, andha velipaduttal, oru arumiyana oru velipaduttal?
The revelation that was going to is a very good revelation.
Unakadukadukappattav darishanam, oru nallavur darishanam?
The vision that was granted to you is a very good vision.
Nee andha darishnatthukum, andha velipadukum, andha pradisthikum, otthadaa, nee valdaal, unnadhiyavalkay, meghavum mahimiaga, devanal, machamudiyam?
If you are able to lead a life confirmable at the vision, revelation, and the truth, the Lord can change your life as goes his way.
Nan unakadchulakarai, unakadukadaitavabhisheham, intha desaththay assekkakudiya oru abhisheham?
I challenge you, the anointing that you receive is the anointing which can shake this world.
Nee irukkaray edaththay assekkakudiya oru abhishekathay kattarunakadukkutthar?
The Lord has anointing which can move the place where you are sitting.
Anal, nee yo, devan edirbharkkar, andha kaniyay, indrum, velipaduthamudiyamal, tadumarikundrakarai?
But you are very much humbled, offended, not able to reveal the fruit that God is expecting.
Surlalagal matthile, paavichchay, unakulay, marnatthukke eduvaan, oru kaniyay kodundvanduvadukar?
In some circumstances, the motions of sin are causing fruits which are worthy of death unto you.
Devanunidhi wallamay, nee anubhavittum, nee intha vishayathile tadumarivadukkara?
Even though you are experiencing the power of God, you are stumbled in this affair.
Unakoru nerivana oru deviga saktiyyakoduthaar, anal, indrikay, nee kasappana kaniyekodukakkudiya vannai, katthodi samuthle vandrakar?
The Lord has given the power of fullness unto you, but you have come to a stage of bearing lie unto God.
Esaya 14a madhigaram, 29a vasanathle, paambin kanii, enr, oru vaartai uchcharikappattukar?
In the book of Isaiah, chapter 14, verse 20, the lay of serpent, fruit of serpent, we read.
Kanii, ilay, paambin kanii, noor vaartechalappattav?
The fruit of serpent.
Adi yedekanbikarade?
What does it show?
Sarpatthunidhi swabathay kanbikarade?
It shows the characters of the serpent.
Sarpatthunidhi, 7vithamana swabangali, ningal purindukalavendam?
You should understand the seven characters of the serpent.
Ah, intha kanigalay ningal koduthukundrundhal, ungalay ariyamal, ungalkullay intha wallamay, irukkarade, enbadani ningal purindukalavendam?
If you are revealing these characters unaware of you, these powers are working in you, you can understand.
Ningal veliyen nallaruppinga?
Outside, you are all rights.
Ah, oru veela biblela, oru 7veer bible kaila rukal?
You might have studied the Bible many times.
Anal, swabangal, yappudi irukkarade, enbadani sindhituparangai?
But think, how are your characters today?
Sarpam, indrikum kriyasegiradai, nam bhoomile parkal?
We can see the serpent working even today.
Ah, palayya paambu, enr, avan varnikappadukar?
He is described as old serpent.
Intha 7thanmigal, oru manidhalirundu, velipattal, avan paambin kanii ulavanai kaanappadukkaran, enr, artham?
If these seven characters are revealed from the life person, he is having the fruit of the serpent.
Undre tandaram?
Cunning?
Yappoorudo oru viswasi tandaramulavanai marukkaraanao, remba technika base aramistana, avanukulay, avan ariyamal, oru sarpatthinidhi thakkadal irukkarade, enbadani purindukal?
When a man is cunning, he talks in a technique way that we can understand, he has the attack of a serpent.
Adiyahamum, 3, 1, ningal intha vaartai, ungalkella arukkunthari?
In the book of Genesis, chapter 3, the first verse, all of you know this.
First, avanay apritavedam aarimungappadukkarakar?
The Bible is introduced in him in this man.
Sarpam, meghavum, tandaramulavai irundade?
The serpent was very behind.
Yappo, ningal tandaramay sailpattar amistningal, appoorudo, ungalidhi valkile, ungalay ariyamal, oru wallamay, pugundrakarade?
When you're trying to become a subtle cunning way, unaware of you, their power has entered into your life.
2aavudhu velipaduttal, 12a madhigaram, 1a vasanathle, mosumpukkura thanmai?
In the book of Revelation, chapter 12, verse 9, nature of cheating.
Adu vanchitthali?
It is deceiving.
Idu oru pulladavur wallamay, eva, sarpatthinaale, vanchikappattal, enr, vedam chulakar?
It is an evil power, the Bible says, he was behind by Satan.
Adunudhi artham mirudelukku uttattal, enr, artham?
She came under transgression, it means.
Yappoorudo laam oru manidhan pramanaaththi mirukkaran, appoorudo laam sarpatthin thakkadal, avanukulay irukkarade, enbadani ningal purindukalavendam?
Whenever a man is transgressing the law, we can understand, there is the attack of the devil upon him.
3aavudhu, velipaduttal, 12, 10, ningal parkumburudhu?
In the book of Revelation, chapter 12, verse 10.
Avanudhi thanmai, kuttham chaattugal, endu chulappadrakar?
His nature is accusing.
Yappoorudo laam oru viswasiyo ooliyakarno, yappoorudo laam mattavulay kutthanjattar amikran, appoorudo laam oru paambu avanukulay vanduvadukar?
When a believer or a savantagod is accusing others, on those occasions, a serpent is entering him.
Nan chuldharu, ungalkukoru differentana oru karpaniyakarukal?
Perhaps what I say may be a different kind of imagination.
Onne teriyadu, unakulay oru puttu rukkar?
In you, there is a hole, puttu, puttu paambu. Cover of the snake.
Ah, idu onne ariyamal, avanukulay irundu sailpattukundaya rukkar?
Without your knowledge, it is reminding, anything is going inside you.
Ah, ningal vana checkpuni paranga, ungalidhi abhishekathle different ruk?
If you check it out, there will be a difference in your announcing.
Ningal avile bahaykarama naramvige, but elai paradhal rukkai?
But because you are getting filled in the spirit well, but no rest?
Nellan anyavasa pesuvinge, elai paradhal rukkai?
You speak in tongues, but no rest?
Avile chaaduvinge, uluvinge, but ungalkukondu oru freeness rukkai?
But you jump and dance, but there is no feeling joy?
Ah, appo, ulle vaira oru aldrakannu ningal, checkpuni purijigun?
Somebody else is inside, you can't check it up and rest?
Yappoorudo laam nee mattavunay kutthanjattukkaraayo, appoorudo laam, paambin kanii, unakulay velasidukundrakar?
Whenever you are accusing others, on those occasions, the fruit of the serpent is working in you.
Yo van 8, 44, avan poiyan, avan poi kippida, endu chulappadrakar?
In John 8, 44, he is a liar and father of lies, it is written.
Nan oru viswasinidhi kadaila nendru kundran?
I was standing in a shop before a believer.
Appoorudo innoraaltha, namdhi viswasi pesikundran?
Our believer was talking to another person.
Aba, avar kekkarar, yappudi ngay poi chulakarade, yappin chulakar?
He is asked how to tell lies?
Ivare chulakar, business na, chal nairangal poi chulala, adhalo onnu tapuillan chulakar?
He says, in business, you can tell lies sometimes, it's not mistaken.
Na, andha pugil, nikrav, oru andha pugil, andha prasangamaniyirundan?
I was standing on the other side, he was praising from this side.
Ah, anal, avar pona unne koopthai, idu engappa andha vasana rukkarade?
I called him and asked where is this verse?
Ah, sunle vandha vasadi patta poi chulakarale, tapuillan, engarukkara?
When the circumstance comes, the situation is such, you can.
Unne ariyamal, sarpatthunidhi wallamay, unakulay pugunduval, nee vaipukudukkara?
Without your knowledge, you have given room for the power of the devil, Satan enter into you.
5aavudhu, manishanu nesikke vay chiyadu, avan kolai badagan, avandhi thanmai, unakulay irukkarada?
He, he will not be a loving man, he is a murderer, is, are you having this nature in you?
Adi, yo van 8, 44, adutha pugil, andha vaartai varukar?
In John's Gospel, 8, chapter 8, verse 11.
Only yo van 1, intha vaartai chulappadrakar?
In first John, chapter 3, it is repeated.
Purushana nesikke muddiyavillai?
You are not able to love the husband.
Sondha maneviyen nesikke muddiyavillai?
You are not able to lie your own wife.
Tan pettadutthi pillagali nesikke muddiyavillai?
You are not able to love your own children.
Ah, tanney pettadutthi pettorulay nesikke muddiyavillai?
You are not able to love your parents.
En, odanbarandha sagodara sagodara nesikke muddiyavillai?
You are not able to lie your own brothers and sisters.
Oray savailay irukkara viswasiyala nesikke muddiyavillai?
You are not able to love the members of the church.
Arumiyana varle, idinudhi thakkadal thanmai enna?
What is the nature of this attack?
Idha avanudhi 5aavudhu kanii?
This is the fifth fruit.
Adu unne manisha kolai badaganai machthukkara?
It makes you a slayer of men.
Tan sagodaraipahakkaray evanum, manisha kolai badaganai irukkar?
He thought, hates his brother, a slayer of men.
Aba, unaki yappalavudha odhumi singjalu, unala unan nesikke muddiyad?
Whatever amount of help he is rendering, you are not able to love him.
1, Pedri, 5, 8, parkumburudhu, avandhi aaravudhu thanmai, sutradal?
In chapter 5, verse 8, his another nature is roaming about.
Evanay vilengalamo, vendru vagi dedi sutradal?
He is roaming about whom he may devour.
Oru viswasi suttave guddar?
A believer should not roam about.
Na, apritam prasangamaniyikundu varukar?
I am praising about that.
Oru viswasiyakum 3spat?
A believer has three characters.
Ooliyakarnakarinduspat?
Two, the seven, two.
Priyavungalakal?
Do you understand?
Oru ooliyakaran irukkavendi, 2edanaruke, oru viswasi irukkarade, 3e, 3edanaruke?
In three places, a believer can be, but a savantagod should be in two places.
Oru viswasiyapakunna, na, 3edathle bakala, oru ooliyakarnapakunna, 2edan, 2edathle than bakala?
We can't see a believer in three places, but a savantagod should be seen in only two places.
1, oru viswasi irukkaran, chunnan, avan vittalirukunno, adu first spot, 2aavudhu, faithamalirukunno, adu second spot, 3aavudhu, avan vellayyo, business, andhatthalirukunno, mattay entha edathliyo, anga, inga, avan sutthunanna, avan, vairu oru wallaminaale thakappadukkara?
The believer should be first of all in the house, secondly, he should be in the church or faith club, thirdly, in his working place or business spot, if he is going to other places, he is attacked by the serpent.
Mattapadi, anga poi, inga poi, coffee kudichai, inga vandhan, na, roadla pathai, apri time passing, na, vandhan, chunnan, na, avanukulay vairu oru alu, ulavandrakara, avan sutta vaykiddan, ningal purijigun?
I went there, talked to him, I drank coffee, and I did such and such things, somebody has entered him, and it got made him roam about.
Ooliyakarnakarinduspat?
Two spots for the workers.
1, devanunidhi vede, ooliyaththi nimithamaga, oru viswasiyasanthi kavhal?
The house of God, for the sake of ministry, he can make a believer.
Vaira entha edathka, avanukupogudukku, urimayum, vaipum, vasadiyum, surlalayum, guddar?
He has no freedom or right or privilege to go to any other place.
Yo puvile, andavarketikkarar, nee engayirundavukkara, enr, saathanay pathuketodan, avan bhoomiyendukum sutti tirindhi, nan varukar, endu chunnan?
When, in the book of Job, the Lord questioned, where, Satan, where from you are coming? I roamed our two and four, along the world and kindness, he said.
Yo van 5a madhigaram, 5a vasanathle, avan thirudan?
In John's Gospel, chapter 10, verse 10, he is a thief.
Avan thirudamu, kollavum, alikkum varukaran, enr, vairu 1kum vara?
He is coming to steal, to kill, and to destroy for nothing else he has.
Yappoorudo oru thirudakkudiya oru palakkam, namdhi chivithla varukarado, appoorudo, sarpatthunidhi thakkadal, unakulay irukkar?
When you have the character still in your life, then there is the attack of the serpent in your life.
Priyamalay, indrikay kuude, konjukala undendre, avan wallamiyaga kriyeseedavukar?
Even today, he is working mostly because he has got very little time.
Ningal parangal, pisasupiditulal adumburudhu, sarpatthi pola, assekkarade, ningal parkal?
The people who are possessed by devil, when they are tossing, you can notice their movement as the serpent.
Ah, paambin kanii, endu chulappadrakar?
It's the fruit of the serpent.
Indrikay ettenaveer kulay intha paambin kanii kaanappadukkara?
How many are possessing the fruit of the serpent?
Andavari edirbharthu vandha kanii enna, nee kodukakkudiya kanii enna, enbadani intha maale velayil, nee sindhitupar?
What is the fruit that is expected by God, and what is the fruit they are yielding in this evening hour, you think about?
Avar edirbharkkarade, oru nallanarkkulathraachetchidiyay unenanaati, unnadathle, nallakaniyedirbharkkumburudhu, nee yo, kasappum, poiyum, marnatthukke eduvaanadum, unnadhi chivithle, paambin thanmigalayum, nee velipadukundrakar?
The Lord has planted his choices to wine, and he is expecting to do fruit, fruit from you, but you are bearing the all sorts of lie, the things of the serpent, and the evil things.
Indrikay, intha thanmigalayirundu, intha kootamudiyaradukule, nee veliyavaruvaayanal, unnadhi valkay, prakasamay mar?
If before this meeting ends, if you are able to come out of these characters, your life will be illuminated life.
Indrikay unnadhiyavalkil, intha paambin thanmaiirundu, nee vidhalay peravendita avastiyam?
It is essential, you should be delivered from the characters of this sin in this evening.
Idi aarav pisasupidcha, unakana prasangamaniyukkare, unakulay irukkar, marindrukkar thanmai, aviyanavur unakusutti kattukar?
I am not preaching to a demon possessed person, the spirit of God is pointing out the traits that are hidden in your life.
Unne ariyamal, nee sutti kundrakaray, edo oru wallamay, unne alakkaliyitha sutta vaykukar?
Without your knowledge, you are roaming about, because some power, without your knowledge, it is making you roam about.
Mattavulay vanchipathum, tandaramay sailpattavum, unnadhi vyabharay yuktay, endu chulakaray, idu sarpatthunidhi oru wallamay, enbadani nee purindukalavendam?
Deceiving others and acting in a cunning way, you say it is a technique of the business, but understand, it is the nature of the serpent.
Mattavulay, sagodara sagodariyalay, thaithavuppanay nesikkamudiyamal, nee kaanappadukkaraay, nee oru manisha kolai badagan, unakulay sarpatthin thakkadal irupadai, nee purinduvay?
You are not able to love the father and mother and the brothers and sisters, that means you have the attack of the serpent, you are a slayer of men.
Indike ettenaveer, intha valkay nalay thakappadrakarirai?
How many are attacked by this kind of life?
Idaya, unnadhiyasaavai, unnadathle edirbharkkarade?
What the church is expecting from you this?
Idaya, unnadhiyasaavai ooliyen, unnadathle edirbharkkar?
Is the savantagod expecting this from your life?
Idaya, unne sushitthi devan, unnadathle edirbharkkar?
Is God who created you, expecting this from you?
Unakakaasilvila chivani koduthavir, intha thanmaiya, unnadathle edirbharkkar?
The Lord who awarded his life for you at the cross, is expecting this nature from you?
Unakadusamadhanaththi undubandam akkiniyeyattare, avar unnadathle, idaya edirbharkkar?
He received the chastisement of peace upon him, is he expecting this from you?
Unakakaadikappattare, norukkappattare, kayappattare, unnadathle, idaya avar edirbharkkar?
He was slain, he was bruised, he was beaten, for your sake, is he expecting this aspect from you?
Arumiyana devanidhi pillai, indrikay nee kodukkavendiyakanii, intha thanmaiirundala, veliyavandu, nee manantirupadhalakkeetavur kaniyay, nee koduthaal, nalamayiruk?
Well, our child of God, it is better if you all are able to come out of these traits, and if you are able to bear fruits or reprints in your life.
Oru veelai, unne aarindho, ariyamalo, surlalagal matthile, palavidamana wallamigalinal thakappattu, ippeepattai, kanigalukulay, nee sikki irukkala?
Knowingly or unknowingly, because of the situation, circumstances, by the attack or certain things, you are yielding such fruits today.
Oru veelai, entaayenne paavathil karpantharithal, nan turkunathil uruvanen, endu chuli, nee unnadhi thaithavuppanay kuray chuli, nee paavathle yey mulgi kaddakala?
My mother considered, you see, I was shaped in nakedity, quoting this verse, perhaps you may try to continue in sin, accuse your parents?
Indrikay esukrisoi viswasiyitha, nee andavunidhiyapadathle veluvayanaal, unnadhi ellakaramaththi neekki, unne suttiyereeka, avar wallamayulavara irukkar?
Believing, Lord Jesus Christ, if you are about to fall at his feet, he is able to cleanse and deliver you from all such wicked? If you are not able to do this, I understand. Lord, if at all you come today, I am able to realize I am not yielding fruits which is pleasing to you. The life of a man is very short. In a very short period than NC's life. We do not know when we will lose our end. All of a sudden he will call, we have to go. We cannot predict what time God will call you unto me. In a minute, your life may come to an end. In the last minute, you have to give your son. In the last minute, what kind of fruit you are bearing, based upon this, your eternal life is decided.
If at all the Lord is expecting fruits from our life at this meeting, what kind of fruit you and I are rendering unto him?
You think about it. And how many people you have bitterness? We are humbled, how many people unable to love? How many times we have become liars? How many times we have revealed characters and nigh into us?
If you have not given your son, what will you do?
Simply, I came to meeting and went not so, if you are not possessing the fruits that the Lord is expecting, what you will do? In one tree, he climbed hard fruits, but there was no fruit. He was much grieved.
When he went to Bethany, he expected fruit from a tree.
There was no fruit in it. At once, he cursed it. In another place, it was granted one more year for that tree.
In the same Nagarkoyil, many people did not bear fruits, but they have been judged, but God has added one more year unto your life.
The Lord was very strict towards certain people, but in the case of you, with loving kindness, he is walking in our midst.
Believe me, you are not able to do this, and you have to give your son.
Whoever you may be, turn your mind from these evil traits. At least today, you come out from the bitterness. From the characters of serpent, at least today, you come out.
From this life of lies, from this life of vanity, at least come out today.
Through this meeting, the Lord is calling for you to repent.
In Matthew's Gospel, chapter three, verse eight, John the Baptist preaching, you bear fruit with your repentance.
He was respecting one thing from those people, it was repentance.
Until now, you have to give your son.
Until now, you have to give your son. Till now, what kind of lie you might have, it doesn't matter, if at all this evening hour, if you are able to repent, it is better.
The Lord is calling you from a victorious life, from a life of hypocrisy.
The foundation of Christian life is repentance. In Hebrews, chapter six, it is written, repentance is the foundation of the divine. When a man is not able to repent, he cannot reach into the kingdom. Repent for the kingdom of God is a chance. It is essential a child of God to repent, turn his mind from these all traits towards the fullness and life. Believe me, you have to give your son. Well, our child of God, what the Lord expects you from this meeting is repentance. The Lord is expecting that repentance in your life. An important, very important experience, which should take place every day in the life of a child of God. Without your knowledge and my knowledge, you might understand a sanctification by blood is happening. Yeah, but a sanctification by blood is happening. When a man is losing this experience, he comes to the last stage of his life. A child of God should turn towards God. Just for not name sake, but mentally he should repent.
In the Bible, the Jews and the people of God, repent, the Lord calls.
You are going towards sin, repent towards God. There should be a turning point in your mind today. If you repent, what will happen? What will be the nature of that fruit? If you repent, the manner of speech will be different. If you repent, your look will be different. If you repent, the manner and behave will be different. If you repent, the confession of words will be different. If you repent, you will be reconciled to everyone. If you repent, you will humble yourself. If you repent, you will be at peace with everyone. If you repent, there will be a grave to rest in your life. The Lord says, you repent, I will heal you.
In the book of Isaiah, we read. In the book of Isaiah, chapter fourteen, verse twenty-two, you repent, I will heal you. If you have a son, you have to give him a lot of money.
If the Lord is to heal a person, repentance is the chance. The book of Isaiah, chapter nineteen, verse ten. If you repent before the meeting ends, God will heal you and send. It's opportunity for you to receive healing is repentance. If you repent from bitterness, lie, the attack of the serpent, and other evil characters, you will be able to give that healing. Pastor T U once talked about a rich man. He had wealth of oil. Nobody was able to stand in the petrol business before him, because he had. He was earning a lot of money. When he was earning a lot, the income was increasing very much, he was earning a lot also. At the age of fifty, he was afflicted by cancer. He could not do anything. The competitors spoke, if at all he, NC's life is better. Everybody spoke, it's better he dies. He has failed the life of so many people. Once, he died. He could not spend the leisure, he took the Bible in his hand. He could not do anything, he became a person numb. Acts of the post, chapter twenty, verse thirty-one. He read that verse. The words that it is better to give than to receive, the words spoken by Jesus. With that word, he stopped. He kept on thinking on the words of Jesus, it is better to give rather than to. It is more blessed to give than to receive, instead of earning lots of rupees, it is better to give, this word was touching him. He called the servant, asked to take some money and keep in the car. He took the car and to a locality or pool of people. The people came forwards. He distributed money to everyone. The people were astonished, he would not give one cent, he is giving so much money today. He willingly, he was giving that money out. He felt something happening in your body. When he says, he returned home, he was killed from cancer. One word spoken by Jesus, it is more blessed to give, when you abide the word and act accordingly, he received healing. At the age of ninety-two, he died. If you repent today. If you are able to bear fruits with your repentance. Before this meeting ends, you can note it down, the Lord will heal you. Even a word or thought of what of God is removed, passes away. If you repent today, the Lord will heal you. If you repent today, the fallen life of you, the fallen shepherd knuckle will be rebuilt. In Job, chapter twenty-two, verse twenty-three, you repent, you will be rebuilt again. You need not be accusing and watching about. You should not justify you want to continue. Should you repent, you are wounded like the Lord will rebuild. The Lord is seeking fruits with your repentance in this evening. But like the wife, a group of people came unto him, to those people, the Lord, John the Baptist spoke, you bear fruits with your repentance. How many of our link to repent today? Just like a sinner repents, a child of God should repent. Just like a sinner repents from a sin, a child of God, very often he happens to fall, from this fall, he should repent. In the book of Revelation, chapters two and three, the spirit of God was speaking to the seven churches. He says, five churches should repent. Perhaps you might have been water baptist, rip baptist, if you repent from these five aspects, even the believers will be repenting and killed by God. If a worker is able to repent from these five things, the spirit of God will heal you. Do not think this is a sermon to the sins, the Lord loves even true. In the book of Revelation, chapter two, four, five, and six. I have some awareness that you have left the first law. Remember from which state you are fallen. The Lord says, you do the first words once again. The Lord emphasizes you should repent. What you understand? In the beginning, when you came to Christ, the force you had, it is diminished. If you repent and come the first law, the Lord will bless you, the Lord will cleanse your life, heal you. Four things happen when you repent. First, you see blessing. You are delivered from captivity. You are rebuilt in your life today. If these four things don't happen in your life, you should do the first words, you should come to the first law, you should realize from which place you are fallen. You think, from which consideration you are fallen? You think that you are fallen from grace? You think that you are fallen down from the upper Rome, from anointing? In the book of Revelation, chapter two, verse sixteen. What is told? You have the teaching doctrine of other legions who repent from this. After you come to Christ, you should not hear other doctrine. In Acts of the apostles, chapter two, it is written about the doctrine of apostles, you should remain steadfast in that doctrine, if you are just oscillating, you cannot get to blessings. Book of Revelation, chapter two, verse twenty. If you have a life which is causing other people to commit sin, you should repent. Regarding the church, he gave occasion to repent. In chapter three, from the luxurious life, you should come out. It is written, in what manner you asked God and received blessing, healing, and repentance, the Lord says, you should remember. He says, I am standing at the door and knocking at you. Believe me, you have to give your son, and you have to give your son. Well, but if you repent today, we bear fruits with your repentance, the Lord will be happy. The Bible says, if you do not repent, the Lord will select other people. If you do not repent, do not bear fruits, God will select a different people. He spoke, if the men are not praising God, those stones will praise God. In Matthew's Gospel, chapter twenty-one, verse forty-three, the kingdom of God will be taken away from the people who are not bearing fruits, it will be given to the people who are able to bear fruits. Today, how many are going to bear fruits with your repentance? Believe me, you have to give your son, and you have to give your son. Well, but if you repent today, the Lord will perform rituals in your life. With the next fruit, I want to control. In the Ephesians to Hebrews. What does the Bible say? Hebrews, chapter thirteen, verse fifteen. What does the word of God say? Fruits of repentance. The Lord is fruit of our lips from a man. The Lord is expecting this fruit from a child of God. The Lord expects the spiritual people of God to bear these fruits. The fruit of our lips. From the time a man is repenting from sins, there should be a moment in his lips that he is bearing the fruit of lips unto God. From that time, moment he repents, this experience should be manifested in his life. In how many people's life, this experience is prevailing? How much experience of praising God you possess today? In the life of many people of God, this is decreased. The spiritual people of God, because they are not having these fruits, they have lost many things. After you repent, till you end your life, this experience of wearing fruit of the lips, praising God. The price of God will be always in my lips. I have ordained these people for me, they will tell forth my praises. With this fruit, this meeting is coming to an end. Whatever situation you pass through, you can change your life through the power of praise. No power can move a person who is able to praise God. When a man starts praising God, the Lord starts walking with.
When a man starts praising God, the Lord starts walking in his life.
"எப்பொழுது ஒரு மனிதன் தேவனைத் துதிக்க, அவன் கடனாலியாக இருக்கிறான், ஸ்தோத்திரிக்க கடனாலியாக இருக்கிறான் என்று வேதம் சொல்லுகிறார்.
The word of God says, a man is duty bound to praise and thank God.
"என்ன வியாதியோ, பெலவினமோ, எந்த பொறாட்டமோ, நீ துதித்துப்பார், கத்தர் அர்ப்புதங்களைச் செய்ய ஆரம்பித்துவிடுவார்.
What are sickness, difficulty, affliction, you start praising God, the Lord will do miracles.
"நன்றி சொல்லக்கூடிய ஒரு வாள்கை அவசியம்.
A life of thanking God we need.
"அது மிகமும் உன்னு விளையேறப்பட்டோரு வாள்கை.
It's a precious life.
"பத்து குஸ்டரோகியல் ஏசு முன்னிடத்தில் வந்தார்கள்.
Ten lovers came unto Jesus.
"கோயாசாரினத்தில் காண்பீங்கள் என்று சொன்னார்.
The Lord said, you show unto the priests.
"போகும் அளிலே ஒரு உனக்கு சுகம் கிடைத்துவிட்டது.
On the way, they received healing.
"ஓடி வந்த அந்தவர்டைப் பாதத்தில் விழுந்து துதி செலித்தினான்.
One person came and fell at the feet of Jesus and praised God.
"எத்தனவே நீங்கள் துதித்துப் பளகிருக்கிறீர்கள்?
How many of us starting praising?
"எத்தனவே காலையிலே எண்ணுத் துதித்துப் பளகிருக்கிறீர்கள்?
How many of us get up early in the morning and praise God?
"எத்தனவே மாலையிலே துதித்துப் பளகிருக்கிறீர்கள்?
How many praise God in the evening?
"அந்தி சந்தி மத்தியான வேலைகளில் நானுமே துதிப்பேன்னு ஒரு மனிதன் சொன்னார்.
A man sit in the morning, moon and evening.
"ஒருநாளில் ஏழு விஷயினானுமே துதிக்கிறேன்னு ஒரு மனிதன் சொன்னார்.
A man said, I will praise you, thank you seven times.
"நீங்கள் துதித்துப் பாருங்கள், கத்தர் பெரிய காரிங்களைச் செய்ய ஆரம்பித்துவிடுவார்.
You start thanking and praising God, the Lord will do great things in your life.
"ஒரு பீஷாசு தொற்றின பொழுது.
Once, when a devil was chosen away.
"அந்த பீஷாசு சொன்னது?
The devil sold.
"காலையிலே நாலு மணிக்கு, இவன் பேரைச் சொல்லி ஸ்தோத்தரம் மண்ணாம இருங்க, நான் இவனை என்னலாம் மண்ற பாருங்க.
At four o'clock, stop praising God in his name, I will do whatever you want.
"நகாலையிலே எந்திச்சு வச்சு, ஒரு லிஸ்ட் வச்சு வாசிக்கிறீங்கள், இதனாலே என்னலாம் ஒன்னுமே பண்ணமுடியலன்சொல்லி.
Early in the morning, you get up and read a list because of that I cannot do anything.
"நீங்கள் தேவனைத் துதிக்கிறீர்கள்?
Are you praising God?
"தேவனைத் துதியிங்கள், எல்லா பீஷாசுகள் ஓடாரம்பி.
Praise the Lord, all the devils will flee.
"உன்னுடைய வாள்கீலில், நீ தேவனைத் துதித்துப்பார், உததுகளின் கனியைச் செலித்துப்பார், எரிகோவின் கோட்டையைக் கத்தர் விளவைப்பார்.
You praise God in your love, start giving thanks unto God, the Lord will cause the walls of Jericho to fall down.
"நீங்கள் எணைந்து துதித்துப் பாருங்கள், சிறைச்சாலியின் அஸ்திவாரங்களைக் கத்தர் அசைப்பார்.
You start praising God, the Lord will shake the foundation of the prison.
"மூன்று ராஜாக்கள், ஒரு ராஜாவை எதிர்த்து வந்தார்கள்.
Three kings came as a portal king.
"ஒரு மும்முனைத் தாக்குதலை அவன் உணர்ந்துகொண்டிருந்தான்.
The three cornered contest he was expecting.
"அவன் செய்த காரியம் என்னதிரிமா?
What was the thing he has done?
"அவன் சொன்னான் தன்னுடைய சனங்களைப் பார்த்து, நீங்க நான் சொல்ற டைத்திலே எல்லாரும் தேவனைத் துதிக்காரம்செரிந்தார்.
He told that his people, when I say you praise God, you start praising God.
"அவன் துதி செய்ய தொடங்கினார்கள், கத்தர் யுத்தத்தைத் தொடங்கிவிட்டார்.
The people started praising, the Lord started the battle.
"உததுகளின் கனியை கத்தர் உன்னிடத்திலே எதிர்பார்க்கிறார்.
The Lord is expecting the fruit of the lips.
"இதுவரை உன்னுடைய வாள்விலிருந்த மர்ந்துகேதுவான கனிகளையும், பொய்யின் கனியையும், கசப்பான கனியையும், கத்தர் உன்னிலிருந்து வெளியே கொண்டுவர விரும்புகிறார்.
The Lord wants to take away the fruits worthy of death, the fruits of life, the fruits of the serpent, and you, Lord wants to...
"உன்னை அறியத்தோ அறியாமலோ, உனக்குள்ளிருந்துதானே, அந்த சர்ப்பத்தின் கிரியைகளை இன்றைக்கு முடிவைக்குக் கொண்டுவர அவர் விரும்புகிறார்.
Knowingly, unknowingly, there were the works of the serpent in you, the Lord wants to take them away today.
"இன்றைக்கே இந்த மாலைவெளியில், நீ அவைகளிலிருந்து வெளியே வந்து, மனந்திரும்புதலுக்கேற்ற கனியைக் கொடுக்க, அவர் உன்னிலித்திலே எதிர்பார்க்கிறார்.
The Lord expects that you should come out from these things and start bearing fruits of repentance.
"இரண்டாவது, அவர் உனக்காக யுத்தம் செய்ய, எரிகோவின் கோட்டகளை உடைக்க, அஸ்திவாரங்களை அசைக்க, அவர் உன்னிடத்திலே உததுகளின் கனியை எதிர்பார்க்கிறார்.
He is expecting the fruits of lips from your life so that he may fight for you, he may shake the foundation of the prison, he may fall, the walls of Jericho to fall down.
"இன்றைக்கேற்றனவே, தேவன் கிரியசையைவேண்டுமென்று வந்திருக்கிறீர்கள்.
How many of you desire that God should walk in your life?
"அந்தவர் எனக்காக கிரியசையைவேண்டுமென்று வந்திருக்கிறவர்கள், எல்லாரும் கண்களை மூடுங்க.
All the people who say, Lord wants to give hope to my life.
"அவர் இந்த மாலைவெளியில் உன்னிடத்திலே எதிர்பார்ப்பது, மனந்திரும்புதலையும், உததுகளின் கனியையும், அவர் எதிர்பார்க்கிறார்.
What the Lord expects from you is the repentance and the fruit of the lips.
"இன்றைக்கு நீ மனந்திரிமினால், உனக்கு கத்தர் சுகத்தைத் தெருகிறார்.
If you repent today, the Lord gives you a healing.
"பாவ வாள்கீலிருந்து, நீ மனந்திரிமினால், கத்தர் இன்றைக்கு உன்னை சுகமாக்குகிறார்.
If you repent, you are sinful now, the Lord heals you today.
"பொய்யான மாயையின் வாள்கீலிருந்து, நீ உன்னைத் திருப்பினால், கத்தர் உனக்கு இரங்குவார்.
If you come out of the life of vanity, the Lord will be merciful unto you.
"எல்லா கசப்பான தன்மைகளிலிருந்தும், நீ வெளியே வந்து, நீ கிருஸ்துவுக்குள் எல்லாரே நேசிகிறேன்னு சொன்னால், கத்தர் உனக்கு உனக்கு இரங்குவார்.
If you come out from all the bindings and bitterness, if you want to love others just like Christ, the Lord will retake away all the binding.
"ஒருவேளை நீங்கள் சுகத்தைத் தேடி வந்திருக்கலாம்.
Because you came seeking healing.
"இடுகளையைத் தேடி வந்திருக்கலாம்.
You came seeking deliverance.
"வாள்கீலையிலே வேதனையோடு வந்திருக்கலாம்.
Who came in the life pain.
"வாள்கீலையிலே தடுமாற்றதோடு நீங்கள் வந்திருக்கலாம்.
Something you came into pain.
"ஆம், தேவன் எனக்கு கிரியசையைவேண்டும்.
The Lord should walk in my life.
"நல்ல ஒரு முடிவே.
We are very good decision.
"நீ இன்னைக்கு கத்தர் எதிர்பார்க்கிறான் த் கனி காக, உன்னை நீ ஒப்புக்கடுப்பாயா?
You submit, surrender your father's fruits that God expects from you.
"நீ இன்றைக்கு தேவனைத் துதிக்க முடிவடுத்துக்கொள், கத்தர் உன் குடும்பத்திலே அர்ப்புதங்களைச் செய்யப்படும்.
You take a decision to praise God, the Lord will start doing miracles in your family.
"எல்லாரும் கண்களை மூடலாமா?
Shall be close of eyes.
"தேவன் எனக்கு கிரியசையைவேண்டும், நான் இன்றைக்கு உண்மையாகவே, இன்னுடைய தோல்விகரமான வாள்கீலிருந்து மனந்திரும்புகிறேன், இனிமேல் எனக்கு கிடைக்கப்படிய ஒவ்வொரு நிமிடமும், என் வாய் தேவனைத் துதித்துக்கொண்டே இருக்குமென்று சொல்லுகிறவர்கள், கண்களை மூடி கரத்தை உயர்த்துங்க.
The Lord should walk in my life, from this moment onwards, every moment, I should be bearing the fruits of the lips unto God, the people such things lifted their hands.
"இது எலுப்பத்தில் கூட்டமல்ல, பráக்டிகலா இப்போ உனக்கு விடுதலைகிடைக்கவேண்டிய ஒரு கூட்டம்.
This is not railway meeting, it's a meeting of practical life.
"நீங்கள் நினைக்கிறீங்களா?
Are you thinking?
"இன்ன நீங்க நல்ல விஸ்வாசிச்சிங்கன்னா, இப்போ ஒரு பெரிய அசைவு உண்டாகும், அதோடு கட்டுகளல்லாம் அறுந்துபோகும், உன் நாவிலே இனிமேல் எந்த முறுமுறுபுகட வராது, பாயிலைத் துதிக்கிற துதி மாத்ரம்தான் உண்டாகிக்கொண்டே இருக்கும்.
There are all the bindings will be taken away from you, only the lips will be praising God that you can express right now.
"எல்லாரும் கண்களை மூடி முழங்கால் படியடலாம்.
First your eyes are nilled down.
"உயர்த்தப்பட்ட உன்னுடைய கரத்தை கத்தர் தொடவேண்டும்.
The Lord wants touch the lifted hand of you.
"ஒரு டச்.
One touch.
"ஒரே ஒரு தொடுதல், அப்படியே உன் வாள்கீன் தன்மை எல்லாம் மாறி போய்விடும்.
Only one touch, totally the nature of your life will change.
"அலேலூயா, எல்லாரும் கண்களை மூடி, கத்தர் உங்களுடைய வாள்கீலை அர்ப்புதங்களைச் செய்யவேண்டுமானால், நீங்கள் அவரைத் துதித்துக்கொண்டே இருங்கள்.
All of you, close your eyes, if the world is to do miracles, start praising God.
"இருவத்தி ஏண்டி, எரிகோ கோட்டைக்குடை, நீ துதிக்காரம்பித்தால், நொற்றிங்கிவிள வேண்டும்.
If you start praising, even the twenty thousand feet high, Jericho fortress will fall down.
"நீயும், சபையும் எணைந்து பொதுதிக்கும்பொழுது, சத்திருவின், சிறைச்சாலியின், அஸ்திவாரங்கள் இப்பொழுது அசைந்து, எல்லாருடைய கட்டுகளும் கலந்துபோகவேண்டும்.
If you and the church members join, they start praising, all the foundations of the prison will be shaken and all the bindings will be broken.
"ஓ, நீயும் தேவனுடைய ஊலியகாரனும் எணைந்து தேவனைத் துதிக்காரம்பித்தால், ஓ, இப்பொழுது சத்திருவின் வல்லமிகள் சிதறடிக்கப்படும், கத்தர் உன் யுத்தத்தைத் தொடங்கப்போகிறார்.
You and the servants of God join, they start praising, the Lord will bring...
"ஏய் இபிக்கராபக்கதிதாபக்கதிதாபான்யா! "பிரிமானவுலே.
Beloveds.
"எத்தனவே வெற்றிப்பண்றீங்க?
How many have decided?
"எத்தனவே உணருகிறீர்கள்?
How many realize it?
"எனக்கு கொடுத்த வாள்நாளில், இவளும் நால், நான் மர்ந்துகேற்ற கனிகளைக் கொடுத்துவிட்டேன் என்று, எத்தனவே துக்கப்படுகிறீர்கள்?
How many are grateful in my lifetime, I have been bearing fruits of the death so far.
"எனக்கு கொடுத்த நாக்களில்லாம், நான் பொய்யான ஒரு மாயையான வாள்கை வாந்துவிட்டேனே, என்று எத்தனவே ஒத்துக்கொளுகிறீர்கள்?
How many accept the life that God has given me, I got the leading a life of lie and hypocrisy.
"எனக்கு ஒரு நல்ல அபிஷேகம் கொடுத்தும், இன்னும் எனக்குள்ள கசப்பு வைராக்கிங்களும் இருந்துகொண்டிருக்கிறது, என்று எத்தனவே உணருகிறீர்கள்?
How many realize, even though God has given good anointing, bitterness and an immunity continue in my life?
"இனி வரும் உலகத்தின் பலனை ரூசி பார்த்தும், இன்னும் இந்த சர்ப்பத்தின் தாக்குகளை, நான் பொறாட்டத்தை உணருகிறேனே, என்று எத்தனவே வேதனைப்படுகிறீர்கள்?
How many realize, even though I tasted the power of the world to come, yet I come in because of the subs流水the serpent.
"இன்றைக்கு நீ மனந்திரும்பே?
You repent today.
"இனிமேல் ஒவ்வொரு நிமிடமும், நான் உமக்காய் வாழ்கிறேன்.
Here after every moment, minute, I will live for you.
"அந்தவரே, நான் உமக்காய் வாழ்கிறேன்.
Lord, I live for you.
"ஆமே, இனிமேல், என்னுடைய மூச்சு போகுவரை, என் வாய் உமைத் துதித்துக்கொண்டே இருக்கவேண்டும்.
Until I give up my lost breath, my lips will be praising you, Lord.
"எல்லாரும் கொஞ்ச நேரம் சத்தமாய் தேவனைத் துதியிங்கள் பார்க்கலாம்.
Start praising God loudly for some time.
"எல்லா, இவளாலாம் பெல்லனா, தேவனை உயர்த்துங்கள்.
Exalt to God.
"ராஜாவை உயர்த்துங்கள்.
Exalt to God.
"ஆமே, பீஷாசுகள் வரட்டும்.
Let all the devil flee.
"வியாதியின் கூர்கள் ஒடிக்கப்படட்டும்.
All the powerful sinners destroyed.
"நீ துதி, கத்தர் அர்ப்புதங்களைச் செய்வா.
You start praising God with your records.
"திடாபாலாக்கதிதாக்கதிதிக்கராபக்கதிதாபான்யா, வாயைத் தெர
Open your mouth.
"ஓ, உன் வாயை விரிவாய் தெர.
Open your mouth, why?
"ஓ, நன்மையினால் நல்லதை நிரைக்கட்டும்.
God will fill you with good things.
"சொத்தரம், சொத்தரம், எல்லாரும் தேவனைத் துதியினேன்.
Praise the Lord.
அலேலூயா, அலேலூயா, அலேலூயா.
Praise the Lord.
திடாபாலாக்கதிதாபக்கதிதா.
Praise the Lord.
அலேலூயா, ராஜ்யிதாபக்கதிதா.
Praise the Lord.
ரேவிதாபக்கதிதாபக்கதிதா.
Praise the Lord.
திடாபாலாக்கதிதாபக்கதிதா.
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 Praise the Lord.
திடாபாலாக்கதிதாபக்கதிதா.
Praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord, praise the Lord.
"நீ துதிக்காரம்பித்த உடனேயே?
As soon as started preaching.
"நீ முழங்கால முடக்கணியே?
Your nerves down.
"அந்த நம்பிக்கோடு, உததுகளின் கனியை நீசெலித்த தொடங்கினாயே?
With the good hope, you started offering the fruits of lips.
"அந்த கரெக்ட் டைம்தா, கத்தர் வார் டிக்லர் பண்ற டைம்.
That is the right time when the Lord declares the war.
"உனக்காக கத்தர் யுத்தம் செய்ய, அவர் எழுமிவிருக்கிறார்.
Lord has come down to fight for you.
திடாபாலாக்கதிதா. "நீ உயிரோடிருக்கும் நாலு நாலு, ஒருவனும் உன்னுக்கு உண்பாயது தெரிக்கதில்லை.
As long as you are alive, nobody can...
ரேவிதாபக்கதிதாபக்கதிதா.
Praise the Lord.
திடாபாலாக்கதிதா.
Rukkamariyach.
Jesus. ரேவிதாபக்கதிதா.
Rukkamariyach.
இக்கராபக்கதிதாக்கதிதா.
Kamaniyach.
ரேவிதாபக்கதிதா.
Rehtalabariyamkabariyach.
Akkabariyach.
வேதிஷ்கராபாதி.
Rukkamariyach.
Rehtalabariyach.
"நீ, நீ உன் தொண்டையில், ஒரு வேதனையை நீ உணருகிறாய்?
Perhaps you realize something in your throat.
"அடிக்கடி இந்த வேதனை வரும்பொழுதுலாம், நீ கஷ்டப்படுகிறாய்.
Whenever there is some pain, you are troubled very much.
"உன்னைத் துதிக்க முடியாமல், நீத் துதிக்க முடியாமல், அந்த வல்லமை உன்னை இருகக் கட்டி விடுகிறது.
You are not able to praise that power that has bound you.
"ஓ, இப்பொழுது அந்த கட்டுகளை, நான் அறுகிறேன்.
Right now, I lose the binding.
ரேவிதாபக்கதிதா.
Rukkamariyach.
இக்கராபக்கதிதாக்கதிதா.
Rukkamariyach.
இக்கராபக்கதிதாபக்கதிதா.
Rukkamariyach.
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 Rukkamariyach. "ஆமே, உன் தலையில், உன் தலையில்.
Your head.
"ஒரு நரம்பில், ஒரு வேதனையை நீ உணருகிறாய்?
You feel a pain in your nerve.
"அது வரும்பொழுதுலாம், உன்னாலதைத் தாங்கவே முடியவில்லை.
Whenever you are afflicted, you are not to bear the pain.
"அதற்காக செபித்தவர்கள், இது ஒரு சத்திருவின் தாக்குதலென்று உன்னிடத்திலே சொல்லிவிட்டார்கள்.
The people who pray said it is an attack of the devil.
"நீ பயந்துபோனாய்.
You are afraid.
"இதோ, நான் உன்னை குணமாக்குகிற கத்தர்.
I am the Lord who heals you.
"ஓ, நான் உன் பரிகாரியாகிய கத்தர். இபாக்கதிதாக்கதிதா.
Hallelujah.
Yes, amen. Wallamaiyulladi. Yes, amen. Jaya Marikumay. Yes, amen. Wallamaiyulladi. Yes, amen. Jaya Marikumay. Yes, amen. Taveneikumay. Yes, amen. Aushadame. Yes, amen. Taveneikumay. Yes, amen. Aushadame. Yes, amen. Wallamaiyulladi. Yes, amen. Jaya Marikumay. Yes, amen. Wallamaiyulladi.
இக்கராபக்கதிதா.
Taveneikumay.
ஏய், இக்கராபக்கதிதா.
Taveneikumay.
Yes, amen.
Aushadame. Yes, amen.
இக்கராபக்கதிதா.
ஏய், சப்பிக்கரா. இக்கராபக்கதிதா. ராநியாசிமாவு. ஏசு மிதாவது. சந்தாரி வல்லமே சட்டுகிறேன்.
Taveneikumay.
இக்கராபக்கதிதா. Taveneikumay. Yes, amen. Taveneikumay.
அலேலூயா.
இசாபாபிலாபாலாபக்கரா. இக்கராபாலாபக்கதிரா.